Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilman Ford, Councilman Bastian.
Here.
Councilman Stiltner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tremont.
Here.
Mayor Burnett.
Here. Councilman Ford is not feeling well. He's not with us tonight, so let's just keep him in our thoughts and prayers. And it's cold and flu season. What can you say? Public comments on a consent agenda items only. Anything on items six through fifteen? If anybody has any comments to make, now would be the time to do it. There being none, may I have a motion on the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Second. I have a motion and second, and that's agenda items six through fifteen. Call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Stiltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tremont.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, for roll, which brings us all the way to citizen participation. We have Mr. Robert Reinhegan. Please. Hey, Robert.
Good evening, sir. Mayor, members of the council, Robert Reinhegan, 1425 Dexter Drive, Port Orange. During the city attorney comments at the last city council meeting, city attorney made you aware of a suit by the League of Cities against the state about the placement of cell towers, which has an impact on home rule. And then the council then voted to join that suit. I feel that it is inappropriate to vote on issues that are not on the agenda. If someone wants some action taken, they should provide adequate support for that action as part of the request to be on the agenda. This would provide adequate time so that issues can be thoroughly reviewed and counter arguments and questions prepared. Spur of the moment votes, in my opinion, are just not consistent with due diligence. A comment was made that there would be no cost except sending someone to some of the meetings. If Port Orange is a member of this league, then it seems that they would be able to send a member without separately joining the suit. And I would personally like to know why some other cities are thinking that they need to join that suit. And those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, Robert.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have... So Stephen Clyde, is that how you say it? And you wanted to speak about traffic control.
Time.
And we'll get you back when we talk about shopping carts. So traffic control was right now.
Yes. Did the shopping carts come after this?
Yes.
Because I thought I may have missed it.
Nope, nope. We just started, and that one would be item nineteen.
Thank you. Okay, traffic control seems a little strange to me. I have been driving for, believe it or not, seventy years, and I have never seen traffic lights set up the way they are and constantly changing their patterns, particularly in Port Orange on Dunlaughton. Traditionally, in my experience, when you have two... One road and a light in there, and the light has a left turn arrow on it on each side, it's always been my experience that the two left turn arrows go on at the same time, and you clear out the left turns, and then they go off, and the straight through traffic is allowed to go. Not so anymore, apparently. Sometimes it is, and then you go back the next day and it's totally different. For example, if I'm heading east on Dunlaughton and I get to Nova, I want to make a left turn, and what happens a lot of times is the cars making the left turn from the other direction are allowed to go, along with the cars going through from the other direction. Once the cars making the left turn from the other direction, and this is confusing, is cleared out, then the cars heading east on my road are allowed to go. But anybody trying to make a left turn onto Nova, like me, you sit there until either something freezes over or all the cars that are coming from the east are let through. Then you go back the next day, and it's the opposite direction. And then you go back a third day, and it's the way it used to be with the two left turns going at the same time. First of all, why can't they settle on a standardized routine? This is ridiculous, unless they're trying to confuse the drivers and maybe get a little extra money from accidents, of which I had one yesterday, by the way, at that intersection. And, well, all I can say now is the DOT supposedly stands for the Department of Transportation. I have renamed it the Department for the Obstruction of Traffic. And I really feel that way. The other thing that I have a problem with there is I've been in this town, living in this town for thirty-four years. I retired here. I remember when Nova Road was one lane up, one lane down. Then they widened it. And then after that, at one point, they resurfaced it a few years later. Once they resurfaced it, they made Nova Road from Dunlaughton all the way up to Bevel no passing. I was a little upset. I called the newspaper. I'm a retired journalist. Called the newspaper, they ran a story and...
I've got you over your three minutes. Can you wrap... If you can wrap up real quick?
Yes, I will.
If you can do that in the next few seconds?
I called the newspaper.
Or I'll invite you back because I love this topic.
I called the newspaper. They printed something about it, and next thing you know, they sent crews out to restore passing zones. But they still have a lot of roads in this town. For example, Reed Canal from Nova all the way over to Ridgewood, no passing, not one single time. Again, Department for the Obstruction of Traffic. Thank you.
Do me a favor?
Yes.
Just say your name into the microphone for the record, if you don't mind.
Stephen Clyde, K-L-E-I-D.
So I did say it right?
Yes, you did. Congratulations. Are you German?
No, sir.
Well, you might... You should be.
Appreciate you. Just on that topic, we should be getting an update soon, but we're about to spend a good portion of dollars on an adaptive traffic signaling system to upgrade and make all those traffic lights talk to each other much better in the next year. And there are times where I have to admit that I think traffic engineers have their own sense of humor, but I am certainly looking forward to the improvement that comes along with this.
That's correct, Mayor, and you should see the adaptive signaling in 2020. But I do want to set the expectations that that doesn't mean that green lights are going to go when you want them to. It'll be adaptive in nature. It'll sense what traffic's where, and it will change accordingly. So, you know, my caution to drivers is to watch the green and yellow lights and don't go on yellow if there's ever a warning. So, yeah, we're going to have to set expectations with that when it comes.
Jake, is there a conversation to be had with the county on the light pattern? I hadn't heard of this issue before where it's different day in and day out.
It's actually...
Different by the time of day as well.
It's actually based on time of day, and it does change. But people should not obviously be going through intersections based on what they think's going to happen. They ought to watch the lighting, and it does change based on traffic. The caveat is, in the past two weeks, during certain times, we have our police officers manipulating the traffic due to the Taylor Road blockage. So that adds even more complexity to Dunlaughton right now, especially west of Clyde Morse and Yorktown.
As we move into council comments, Jake, I was going to have you update us anyway on what's going on with the Taylor Road repairs.
I can do that.
So we might as well stay on traffic, and I think you brought an expert in as well to give us some information. Could you update us on the latest and greatest on Taylor Road?
Sure. Instead of setting it up, if Brad Blaise from Mead Hunt can come up, his company is doing the engineering for us and working in coordination with the county to make sure we do this project right. I know it's got everybody wondering, so Brad, if you could...
Good evening, Brad Blaise, Mead Hunt. Well, here's the plans. So we met last week with county and staff, and we're able to expedite getting a bridge engineer in town, I think it was on Thursday. The county's primary concern immediately upon demolishing the approach slab, which was completely undermined, was, was that approach slab integral to the support of the bridge itself? So we met with staff, met with our bridge engineers, determined that we could remove that approach slab. And then prior to moving forward with, you know, demolishing, removing the soil material, taking out the head walls, the county wanted a plan. They wanted a written plan, signed and sealed by an engineer. So we expedited that work and divided this into two phases, phase one, phase two. Phase one at least allowed the city's contractor, PNS, to remove the material, remove the bridge debris, and prepare to implement the corrective measures under phase two. So while... Over the weekend, we basically prepared plans for the phase one approval, got approval. The county actually replied on a Saturday and a Sunday to get back comments. So then Monday morning, first thing, we had approved phase one plans. We got those implemented. Contractor did the removal, got the approach slab withdrawn, set up fencing. We got the pedestrian walkway passable and safe, so the workplace is now safe. We've got the phase two plans complete as of today. We hope to get them approved tomorrow, start implementing the backfill, the lifts, redoing the head wall, replacing the water main, doing all that work on the remainder of this week and through next week. So there's a likelihood they'll probably have to work through Christmas. And if we can get everything done by the end of next week, and we can pour the slab and pour all the concrete work prior to the next weekend, the seven-day cure time gets us on track to have traffic on it on the Monday when school starts, or hopefully Saturday before school starts. So that's about as quick as it can go. And I think we're on track to get there, and if the weather's good and everything kind of proceeds as planned, we'll make it.
What was the actual cause of it? Was it the water main that caused all this? The water main just kind of revealed what was already happening?
No, there's a twelve-inch water main. Best we can tell, it's put in sometime in the seventies. It's class pipe. It's an inner wall PVC with duct lined fittings. It had a fairly small thrust block holding in place. My suspicion is that there is probably a small leak at that joint. And over time, it leaked a small amount of water and migrated the soils away from that bend. And at one point, it just gave way. Once it gave way, it just kept blowing out dirt, and it completely undermined the slab. It blew out an enormous amount of material, if you've been out there to look at it. It all basically just went down in the B-23 canal. And at that point, they were able to isolate it and shut it down. But in so doing, there was just really no way that you could get by putting traffic back on that or even getting underneath that slab to backfill and compact it to make the repairs and to repair the approach slab and all the soil that was there.
And this might be a longer answer, so I'll wait for it. But just want to see what we're doing to look around our city to see the other mains that are made in that material from that time period.
Yeah, I think I briefed that the weekend that it... Or the week after it happened, and Lynn Stevens has a pretty good idea of where all those pipes are and where there's the most concern, and we'll address those as quickly as we can. So we're a little more proactive than reactive.
Now, I know bridges are just... It's not like replacing just a road. So I understand the timeframe. But, you know, vast majority of residents, particularly all the parents who are driving to school every day are very frustrated, obviously, with the time that it's taken to do that. What's your best guess? Is it to get it done before we get back from the break?
That's the plan, is to... Hopefully, if we can get all the underground work done and get all the soil in place and the slab poured prior to New Year's, then we can have that cure period that's required, you know, by the county. So we'll take test cylinders, and as soon as it meets the twenty-eight day strength, then we can allow traffic back on it. So the goal is to get that board prior to New Year's.
What other questions? Scott, Drew?
I was just going to ask you one more time. I know you've kind of touched pretty much on most of it, Brad, but water main breaks happen, and a lot of times, it results in a hole in the road. The road gets filled up, you pave it, and you move on pretty quick. Can you kind of talk just more specifically, and as easy of layman's terms as you can, what all kind of damage occurred here that has caused this to be somewhat unusual? Because, you know, I got to be honest with you, when you say it's a bridge, I think people are thinking about the pedestrian bridge, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the segment across the road.
Well, the pedestrian bridge is a parallel structure, and it's independent. And that's why it can be opened back up. But basically, you had a bridge built in 1964. It's got a series of columns on each side of the waterway, and then it's got poured concrete between those columns. So that bridge structure and the span, it's a series of U-sections connected by the piers on either side. And, you know, the information available about what that bridge, how it was built, how it was constructed, was pretty minimal, and the county was concerned that if you just got in there and started taking out the approach slab, which is all reinforced concrete, that it could compromise the stability of the bridge entirely. So they were justifiably concerned about getting in there and doing demolition work and removing material prior to having, you know, a bridge inspection team and bridge engineers evaluating the condition. Because if you see it, it's a twelve-foot deep hole by thirty-foot diameter, immediately adjacent to the bridge structure. The entire concrete face of the bridge is completely exposed. And it's... You're kind of unknown what the depth of the pilings are beneath that area and how much of that had undermined and washed into the canal. Because there's really no way to tell what was there until you could get the material out. So the fact that it was immediately adjacent to a bridge of somewhat unknown characteristics made it so that you could not just go in there and start backfilling, bringing in vibratory compactors and, you know, potentially damaging the bridge to the point it would make it that much harder to repair.
And, I mean, is there anything that we as a council can do to expedite the timeframe? Or is this the plan to get us there as quickly as possible because of what all has to be done in the process?
I think by doing it in a two-phased approach where we were able to get some of this work done while we've got a few days to design it.
Okay.
That saved three or four days.
Okay.
And then now that we can get what I'll call the implementation stage started tomorrow or the next day, that's about as quick as you can get it done.
Okay.
And PNS is... They're on it, and, you know, they're working as fast as they can.
Thank you, Brett.
I'm good. Yeah, that clarified what I had, so I'm good. The only thing I want to add is I appreciate you stepping up, and as you have many times in the past, done quality work for us on our behalf. This time, I want you to do it just with just as much quality, but in an expeditious fashion. In that joke I made about engineers earlier, I was talking about traffic engineers, not you.
Well, we'll have a report to utilities, and so, you know, we'll be giving them daily updates. There's an inspector on site every day, and so those daily reports will go to Ms. Stevens, and she can pass those along.
Okay. Jake, I would hope that you would continually use social media and the like to keep people updated on the progress. So even if the updates are, there's nothing to update, let's just make sure people are seeing updates, whatever it might be. Brad, appreciate it. Thank you. Council comments. Why don't we start with you, Andrew?
I'm good. I was going to talk about the bridge and it's all done.
I just figured it was the elephant in the room for all of us. We'd just get it up front.
I'm good.
Scott?
I would concur. Those were my comments going to be. So we've already pretty much covered those. Hopefully, the Boy Scouts that are in the room tonight took all that in so they can go out into the community now and help explain why it's taken a little long, so...
We might even need them to chip in for some of the labor, but...
If they went to engineering school, then we wouldn't have to go to Tallahassee for a bridge engineer. How about that?
There's got to be a badge they can earn by rebuilding a bridge and road.
The bridge badge, right?
Yeah, I just had the bridge, but so I'll let it go. I did want to welcome Troop 477, Boy Scouts in here fulfilling their duties to partake in a city council meeting. And Bob Lloyd representing these young men. Always cool to see students here. I wouldn't come in the meetings when I was a kid, that's for sure. So welcome you guys, and this will be the last meeting of the year, so Merry Christmas, everybody, and have a safe and happy New Year's.
Okay, that's it for you. With that, you said they have to partake in a meeting, right?
Partake.
They can't just sit here and watch. Bob, why don't you bring you guys up?
Any moms and dads in the house up here? All right, good job, mom.
All right. Yeah, gentlemen, as you come up, please tell me who you are, where you go to school. And I won't make you tell me what your GPA is or anything, but tell me where you are in your scouting career.
Matthew Lloyd, Father Lopez Catholic High School, and I'm a life scout.
What's your favorite topic at school?
Chemistry.
Chemistry.
Wow.
All right, very good. I love sitting next to you guys like you in class.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Chris Monroe. I'm currently dual-enrolled at both Daytona State and Atlantic High School. My favorite class would have to be same as him, and I'm currently a Life rank, working towards my Eagle.
Good. Are you in one of the academies?
No, I'm not.
How do you like in the dual enrollment program?
Oh, it's very nice. College I find is much better than high school.
There you go.
So did both of my kids.
I learned something there.
I'm early. I'm homeschooled. My favorite subject will probably be science. So since I get to do anything I want, I'm in science. And I'm in a Life Scout. I just started a few months ago.
Outstanding.
My name is Kevin Rollins. I am homeschooled as well, and my favorite subject would have to be science, and I am a first class.
Now, wait a minute, hang on a second. So when you're homeschooled, when do you guys get out for Christmas break?
I don't.
You don't?
No.
Nice.
It's a tougher life.
Yeah.
All right. All right, very good, very good.
You can have Christmas Day off.
Half the day.
I'm sleeping up any day off.
Nice.
You got your birthday off when you have anything off.
That's good, good deal.
Get the work done, right?
My name is Joshua Johnston. I go to Silver Sands. My rank is scout, and I like science.
Very good.
My name is James Rollins. I am homeschooled as well. My favorite subject would probably be either math or English, and I am a life scout.
Nice, great.
I feel way out of place, Mayor. My favorite subject was PE.
Why am I not shocked?
Yeah.
Fellas, if you, in the course of the evening, anything on the agenda that we're covering, if you have a question, just like anybody else, when I ask for public comments, if you want to come up and make a comment or ask a question, please feel free. This is your city too, and I am ever so glad to see you here, and we hope you learned something. Thanks for being here.
Good to see everybody. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, you can come up too if you have a question.
There being no other comments from council, moving on. Item eighteen, the CAC did not meet, did they? So we dragged Bobby Ball all the way out here for him to not give us a report? Merry Christmas. Moving on. Public hearing, item nineteen, second reading of ordinance number 2018-27.
Clarification, item eighteen.
I'm sorry?
Clarification. Do I have the wrong one? Copy, thank you. You're right, Mayor. I am not.
Okay. I just... Robin has me right, but you're behind the times?
As always. Just go.
That's okay. That's because in here online, it's got me... There we go. Ordinance number 28, 2018-27, an ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Belushi County, Florida, mending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighteen, to establish a new Article fourteen adopting shopping cart regulations related to signage and on-site retention measures, providing procedures for shopping carts found on public property, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number 2018-27.
Very nicely done, Mr. Vice Mayor. I like saying that.
Looking forward to that. Practice that like ten times today.
And we have a second. Generally, in second reading, and particularly on this one, we did a lot of the heavy lifting on our original first reading. We had some issues brought to us. We sent it back to staff for work. We came back, had first reading rescheduled a couple of weeks ago, and it passed on first reading. We got some input from the manager at Lowe's. It was very helpful. We got some input from the manager of BJ's, which was very helpful, and we appreciate that on their part. Jake, because this is a second reading of... And there are some people here who want to speak to it. Can you just give us a quick recap of what we're doing?
Since Matt's here, I defer if...
All right. Mr. Jones?
Speak to the changes in the shopping cart ordinance?
Sure, yeah. These are regulations of shopping... I should say, shopping centers with... Or retailers with twenty or more carts require them to have a plan in place based on the input. In the first reading, we ended up creating an exception for those retailers who have not been causing a problem or will continue to not cause a problem in the city of Port Orange. Rather than penalizing the retailer for a cart leaving the facility, this will require a plan to be in place to limit the cart from being able to leave the facility, which is consistent with state law.
Council comments or questions? Just to clarify, Matt, as we've worked on this, when there is a violation, we usually alert the shopping center and give them time to correct it, yes? Yes, and that will be...
Yes, and that will be documented and that will become something that we look to when a retailer wants to apply for an exception. We will count those up and determine in any twelve-month period whether they would qualify for that exception or not.
Okay. With that, I know Stephen wanted to speak, why don't you get first bite of the apple?
First of all, would it be possible to have everybody amplified a little bit? Because I'm retired from the Air Force, unlike many of my compatriots, I have tinnitus.
We've got some devices for you, he's going to grab you one right there.
He's on it. And we can pull our microphones a little closer as well, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the shopping carts, this has been a rather hot topic on nextdoor.com. I don't know if you gentlemen peruse that online thing, but it's pretty good. It seems to me from what I read last night that the council, if what I read is true, the council is considering some sort of penalty or making the store responsible for the shopping carts that are pulled out of there and left two or three blocks away or on the far side of the parking lot or wherever. I frankly don't understand why the store should be made responsible for that because basically what it is, is shoplifting. And if you have a shoplifter in a store who makes off with merchandise, you do not penalize the store for that. You find the shoplifter if you can. What's happening here is, I have a very good example. Several weeks ago, I'm sure you're familiar with Big Lots at Nova and Dunlaughton, and right next door to Big Lots is Save-A-Lot. Several weeks ago, Save-A-Lot adopted the same procedure with their shopping carts as Aldi's has always done. If you want a shopping cart, you put a quarter in the slot.
Yeah.
Take the cart, and if you want your quarter back, you return the cart. Right next door to Save-A-Lot is Big Lots, which does not have that system. And if you go there anytime, you will see Big Lots shopping carts all over, scattered all over that parking area, but very few, if any, of the Save-A-Lot ones, for a very simple reason, people want their money back. So, I, again, I think if you want to take some action, affirmative action, why not see if you can either convince these stores to adopt that same twenty-five cent deposit thing? And by the way, they do get their quarter back once you return the cart. And I think that would clean up most of the problem. As far as shopping carts that are found three or four blocks away, that's a different thing. I think those carts, oh, I did it again, I'm sorry. I think those carts are taken probably by homeless people and frankly, I feel sorry for them. And I can't find it in my heart to tell them or to penalize them for that because I've never been homeless and I don't want to be, but I can imagine what it would be like.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this? Mayor?
There's at one point, based on that last comment.
Let's get all our comments in first.
Okay.
I want to hear from everybody and then we'll discuss what we've heard. Come on.
I didn't really come to speak originally for the shopping cart issue, but it just happened, I personally don't have an issue. Fortunately, I don't need a shopping cart, but my mother's handicapped and I realize there's a lot of people in this area who are handicapped and who need a shopping cart. She can walk about ten or twelve feet, then she has to sit down. When she has a shopping cart, she can pretty much, she's got very good mobility and it's amazing, she can move right along with a shopping cart. Now, if you told her she couldn't leave the store with a shopping cart, it would pretty much destroy her shopping ability anywhere she goes. She needs to be able to use that to get back and forth to be independent. She can't go out basically without it, otherwise she's going to need an electric scooter, she'll have to assemble it or get one in the store, and it would change her shopping experience. Now, a lot of people, if you've never been injured or been handicapped, I'm happy for you, but if you've ever needed a shopping cart just to get around, they really need to watch out for those people and protect those people. So, however they do the ordinance, I want to make sure the handicap people have the ability to use a shopping cart and be able to walk behind it if they want to, so.
Thank you. Do me a favor, just state your name for the record.
My name is William Litch. I live in Sweetwater Hills.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Whitey. Those are all very good points and of course, are disabled or protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act anyway, in which the stores have to provide reasonable accommodation. I think from my part, I don't want to tell operators how to operate, but I think, Scott, and you mentioned it last time when we talked about this, we have some large box operators in this city that are very responsible, and I'll mention them by name. Publix is a perfect example of a very good operator and they are concerned about, well, partly because it's a financial investment, a part of the store, so they're incentivized to make sure that they can control this. But the other part of it is, is that the way this is set up, and Matt, you spoke to this already, is when we find an issue and when we drive the city, we do see shopping carts about and usually they're from the same culprits, they're not from every store all the time. So, what we're asking is for these, our big box operators to be responsible and take care of their property as best to their knowledge. We're not going to find them simply because we find a shopping cart, we're going to give them a chance to come into compliance and we appreciate their efforts. And this is a way of asking everybody to help us keep the city in a very nice, clean operating fashion without some of the clutter of this, but at the same time, if you are continually irresponsible, there is a penalty. Matt, anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, just a quick one. Are we, can you hear me?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. I just want to point out that the mechanism that was discussed in that first comment, the coin deposit, is one of the approved mechanisms for cart retention that we'd be looking to implement. Again, it's not a penalty for the cart leaving, we're requiring that there be some measure in place, much like the coin deposit could be one of them, that would prevent the carts from leaving, so.
Any other comments? Scott?
I would just, I would just comment that this ordinance is about maintenance of our city. This is about us maintaining the quality of life, identifying a very small issue that we need to be cognizant of, that we need to try to have some attention to and encourage the businesses that aren't fundamentally helping keep the city the way it should be to start doing so. The gentleman picked out a couple of specific stores and I will tell you, one of those stores, we pulled over twenty of their carts out of a wooded area on private property and some of those carts were even in canals, waterways, ponds, that's just, we just can't have that. We can't have that. You know, it's really no different than somebody going into a store, buying something that's in a box, walking out to the parking lot, taking the item out and then just throwing the box out on the ground. Can't leave, we can't have a city where carts are being left all over the place. Interestingly enough, the gentleman that brought up a couple of the suggestions about, you know, folks using the carts, we're all for that, absolutely, I love it. I know some stores have gone where you can't take the cart out of the store, I don't necessarily like that too much, but there's quite a few that have done that. Others have gone to a device that allows you to use the cart anywhere on the property, but it's got an electronic component that if you try to take it off the premises, it locks up the wheel. That's all the business of the business is, to decide how they want to manage and handle that. Our concern is that they take care of their property, those carts are expensive, they're not cheap, some of them are between a hundred and three hundred dollars from what I'm told. And, but what we don't want is, we don't want them dumped all over the city. This particular issue came to me by a resident who moved here from another state where they had a big problem with this and they had done some different things. They actually had like an impound type of a deal where the city impounded the carts or something and then the stores had so many days to come get them and then if they did and they lost them. I didn't think that was a good idea, so we're just looking more for the businesses to say, hey, okay, we understand it, we get it, we're going to do our part. That's all this is about. So, it's just a maintenance ordinance to help keep the city looking good and doing the things that we expected.
Drew, anything to add?
No, the one gentleman said about, the issue isn't when they take them to the car and have them on the parking lot or on the property, it's the removal from the store's property. You know, the parking lot is still their property, but when they make their way onto Dunlaughton or in the canal behind, you know, wherever, or into the wooded areas, then, you know, that's where the problem is, so, you know, we're trying to hopefully help them corral their carts and keep them on property.
And I know you've had a different take on it, but.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the funny thing is, the very next day after the first reading, I was getting my car from Goodyear and somebody had done their shopping right across the street at Walmart and pushed their cart across the street to take it to their cars. So, I agree with this in principle, I just don't, I don't want to mandate it onto the businesses from here. At the end of the day, that cost will be added on the consumer. But again, in theory and in principle, you know, I support what we're doing as far as keeping the businesses accountable, but I still won't support the ordinance itself.
Okay. With that, any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Siltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Traymon.
No.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, three one. Brings us to second reading of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty, small-scale future land use amendment for thirteen eighty-nine Reef Canal Road. Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty is an ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, relating to comprehensive planning, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, amending the future land use designation for plus or minus nine point nine one acres from Volusia County urban low intensity, which is zero point two to four units per acre, to city of Port Orange urban medium density, four to eight units per acre, providing for conflicting ordinances, severability, and an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number two zero one eight dash three zero.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Second reading, council, comments or questions? There being none? Would anybody else like to speak to this? There being none, call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Siltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Traymon.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Four oh. Which brings us to, I'm making sure that I'm lining up correctly, ordinance two thousand eighteen dash thirty-one. Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-one, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, rezoning property consisting of approximately plus or minus twenty-nine point seven acres, generally located on the south side of Reef Canal Road between Clyde Morris Boulevard and Atlantic High School, from the city of Port Orange Plan Commercial Development and Volusia County Rural Agriculture A dash two to PUD Plan Unit Development, and approving a master development agreement and conceptual development plan for the Newport Apartments PUD, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number two zero one eight dash three one.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second on second reading. Questions, comments, council? There being none, would anybody else like to speak to this one? There being none, call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Siltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Traymon.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, four oh. Brings us to second reading, ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-three, which is the third amendment to the Journeys End Plan Commercial Development Master Development Agreement Case Number eighteen dash four zero 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 two. The ordinances, hold on a second here.
Get that water, Ruby.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-three is an ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, approving the third amendment to the master development agreement for the Journeys End F dash K dash A, the Peacock Way Plan Commercial Development, PCD, and Conceptual Development Plan, CDP, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance two zero one eight dash three three.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Council, comments? Second reading, there being none? Anybody else like to speak to this? There being none, call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Siltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Traymon.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, four oh. Brings us to second reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen dash thirty-four, amending chapter two of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to code enforcement lien reduction program. Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-four is an ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, amending section two dash two two six of the Code of Ordinances related to code enforcement lien reduction program, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number two zero one eight dash three four.
Second it. We have a motion, we have a second. Second reading of this ordinance, council, comments or questions?
No, none on second reading.
None? Would council, would they?
Yeah, just, I wanted to clarify for some of the folks what our lien reduction program is, you know, we get a lot of waivers that we don't waive at the same time, we see something like this. I just want some clarification from Jake and why this is in place, why it's important.
So, this program is for, if you recall, we had people coming up and asking for lien reduction program, our lien reductions for blighted homes that they bought that had liens on them that were not necessarily utilities, but the fines associated or the fees that were associated, so we set up a lien reduction program. The program itself resided in the, in the community development office. When code enforcement was up there, they moved to the police department, so we're just cleaning up the, cleaning up the ordinance.
Right verbiage based on the department and location that it's in currently?
That's it. It's the ordinance that we had, it's been a year now, right, Tim? Two years? Two years.
Has it been that long?
It has, that's Tim.
Okay. Council, any other comments or questions? Would anyone from the public like to speak to this? There being none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Siltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Traymon.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, four oh. Brings us to first reading of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-five, annexation all aboard Storage Taylor Road. Let me advance this. Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-five is an ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, annexing the following parcels, six two two four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero five one and six two two four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero eight zero, made up of approximately plus or minus three point eight acres of property along with the adjacent Taylor Road right-of-way, repealing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number two zero one eight dash three five.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, and I wanted to read those parcel numbers slowly because I didn't want to annex somebody's house and they didn't know it.
Or yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Now, the crew is planning. As the mayor read, this proposed annexation is approximately three point eight acres as well as the adjoining Taylor Road right-of-way as requested by Volusia County to include in the annexation. If the annexation is approved, the applicant intends on following up and you'd see before you thereafter, applications to change the city, to change to a city future land use and zoning designation with the intent of combining these two parcels with the overall larger parcel here and developing it as a storage facility. The annexation itself does not approve any development, it's just annexing the property into the city of Port Orange. Like I said, if it's approved, you'll thereafter see the future land use and zoning amendments. The zoning amendment proposed to come before you in the future would be for a planned commercial development, so you'd also see a concept plan at that point as well. Various city departments have reviewed the annexation and have determined that there is adequate capacity to accommodate the proposed annexation, so I'm here as well as the applicant if you have any questions.
Greatly appreciate the fact that you're here to take your grilling from us. Let the grilling begin with the vice mayor.
What's the rationale for coming to the city? Why won't they just go through the county where they're already at?
They want to combine it with the larger parcel to do one development, so it's the same owner that owns this yellow piece here, that's who's annexing these two and they same owner that owns this yellow piece here, that's who's annexing these two, and they want to combine it together for one development.
So, you don't have conflicting...
Having a hard...
The part that's in the yellow right now is already in the city.
I got you. Having a hard time with it, just because of knowing what's going in there, and then, or knowing what the proposal is to go in there, and knowing what kind of massive opposition I would anticipate going in there. That's, of course, has to be said to anything that's going to be developed over there, so, you know, it's a tough one for me at this point.
And if it would help any in the discussion, this parcel here that's in yellow has been in the city for quite a while, and has actually had commercial future land use and zoning on it for a very long time.
Yeah, and I'll probably support, I'm just, I'm leery of what lies ahead when this happens, we've been down this road before.
Yeah, I just want to give you the background.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Scott?
I'll be.
Drew?
No, no, I mean, something's going to be built there at some point, so, you know, if they want it in the city, then, you know, I think it makes sense to combine the two and make it right.
The developers here?
Their engineers, the engineers.
Do you like to come up here and justify your fee for the day?
Yeah.
Council, you've had your chance at staff, now you've got your chance to grill the developers' representative. Can we start same, same, well, are you, Chase?
No, I'm, I got my answers I need, like I said, I'll support it because of what's already here, and again, you know, with you doing it in the city, I'm always happy when people want to come in to join the City of Port Orange. I just, I just know, I know what Crane Lakes is going to do when that, when that comes up. Granted, I appreciate that the outlook is going to be a minimal traffic area, which is always good. It's just anytime you take down trees and woods, it's going to be, it's going to be a battle.
Cody Bogart with New Kirk Engineering, this is my first meeting, so take it easy on me.
We'll take it easy on you, Cody.
But, yeah, I mean, everyone, everyone just likes the taking down of trees, we just went through that Norman Beach with one of our sites, but we do promise people that we are putting up newer, nicer looking trees and bushes when that does happen, and the traffic flow is small with the storage area, so, you're right on that.
I think that the, what we're talking about here is, since we know it's going to be developed...
Yeah, yeah, you're right, it's, and those are...
It is going to be landscape, there are requirements, and this is a low-impact development.
But you get an idea of what the questions will be, you know, later on, of course, when the site plans come out.
Okay.
I'm okay, thanks. Scott?
Yeah, I would share, I would share some of the same thoughts. I think, I think one of the things to keep in mind is that, as a city, we would have a choice, either bring this land in, annexed it in, and have the property developed under our codes and ordinances, or just have to sit and take whatever transpires and ends up on the property in the long run, which in a lot of cases, these properties look, at least in the public eye, like they're part of the city, when sometimes they aren't. So, this is an opportunity to better that situation. I would concur with Councilman or Vice Mayor Tremont, that as you proceed through this, there will be a lot of questions and concerns on the appeal of the project, the visibility of the project, the traffic impacts, all those kind of things, so you very well mindful of that, and I would also encourage lots of community participation and contact with impacting the residents and the communities in the area.
That's a good word.
And talking with them, and having those communications always seems to be beneficial, or at least most of the time, so...
Sooner the better.
Indeed.
I know it's early, and some of the things that are going to come up are going to be, how is this property going to be shielded from the surrounding properties, are you thinking wall around the entire facility, or...
I mean, there will be a security fence, whether that's decorative, or what that would actually look like is still in process, but there is, the landscape plan has been concepted and designed, and there is adequate, there is adequate enough shield.
Shield and, and then the other thing, do you know yet, I know it's kind of early, is it going to be twenty-four hour access, or...
I believe so.
Oh, okay.
I think we're still working with the owner on that, but that's, that's up to them and their business, but I do believe it will be twenty-four access.
Okay.
But I will not confirm that.
That's a zoning, I don't think in our zoning we allow for that, do we?
Not sure out there.
Keep in mind, this is future land use and zoning, not, you guys are talking about how many stories and how many lights, and these poor guys just doing future land use.
We can't, we can't help but get ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, I know.
We're just giving you the points that are probably going to come up.
That's the nature of the game.
But, but to their credit, I appreciate every time someone comes up with the land use, so there's an idea of what's going forward.
And staff does share these concerns that we know you always have with the owner.
For my part, I just want to say, I always struggle with these, because sometimes something could go there under current zoning, and we may or may not like it, but if it goes in under current zoning, we have no say-so. At least when we do these things, we have some say-so. I do like the fact that since we know something is going to go there, and it's potentially low-impact, considering, that's certainly a positive for us. The other thing that we all need to keep in account for is, is the balance that we keep with our tax base. As we have residential tax base growing, if it gets, if our residential tax base gets too large, our residents end up taking too far, too big a share of the tax burden. So, we want to maintain the right balance of commercial versus residential, otherwise, Deltona is a great example of what they suffered through the last four, five, six years, and coming through the recession, when you've got too much residential and not enough commercial, so maintaining that balance is certainly a consideration for me. Any other questions up here before we turn it over to the public? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good job, first round.
Anybody care to speak? Anybody have any questions or comments on this item? There being none, none of the scouts? He must have made you happy, well, that's good to know, then. Back to us, any other concerns, questions, there being none, call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Stiltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tremont.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, four oh. Brings us to first reading, item twenty-five, first reading of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-six, which is a two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan capital improvements element annual update, which is ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-six.
Would approve ordinance number two zero one eight dash three six.
Let me, let me go ahead and finish reading it in.
You got to give me a key word or something at the end.
Usually where you hear providing an effective date. An ordinance of the City of Port Orange, Volusia County, I love he's all over this. An ordinance of the, of the City of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan capital improvement element, providing for fiscal year in twenty nineteen dash twenty-four, five-year schedule of capital improvements and supporting data, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Would approve ordinance number two zero one eight dash three six, and my apologies that I'm not on the level as Drew Bastian is on these, but I'll get there, gentlemen. Should have paid more attention.
We have a motion, and I think that was a second coming out of Drew's laughing mouth there, but you, it's been so long since we've seen you.
Nellie Cruz again, planning. So, we do this around this time every year. The council has already adopted the capital improvements program. This is part of state law that requires us to take the parts of the capital improvement program that were already adopted by city council related to concurrency, and put them into the comprehensive plan capital improvements element, so it's basically copy and pasting what you've already approved into the comprehensive plan. A little housekeeping.
Indeed. Any questions on our house, for our housekeeper here? There being none? Any comments or questions from the public? There being none, call the roll.
Councilman Bastian.
Yes.
Councilman Stiltner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tremont.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, four oh. Item twenty-six is the final plat and plans for King's Landing subdivision Phase One, east side of Hensel Road, between East Hensel Road Drive and Hills Boulevard. The recommended motion is to approve the final plat and plans for King's Landing subdivision Phase One.
Let me find it. I'm on it. Move to approve final plat and plans for King's Landing subdivision Phase One, case number eighteen dash five zero 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 three.
Second.
Okay.
Can we do a public comment on that?
We will.
We'll get that.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Tim Berman, Community Development, we are here again for King's Landing. Basically, this is a modification to the previously approved subdivision plan. Basically, what they're doing is they're looking to basically break it up into phases to develop it. This will basically be the initial phase, this will consist of twenty-four lots, basically twenty-three of those will be one-acre lots, the one remaining other lot will be the twenty-thousand square foot lot. Subdivision has been designed according to code with correct streets, two access points, and also future connections to the adjacent properties, which will be further developed later on to eventually connect into English Oaks Drive and Broken Bow Lane. As council may remember, a variance was approved that prohibited, or basically did not require the connections to Westport Drive or Forest Troll Drive, that would still be in play. However, as those future phases are developed, we'll come back before you with phases two and three to finish up the subdivision. This approval is just for the construction of twenty-four lots, and staff has recommended approval.
You said the Forest Troll is just not for this one, but they will open it up later?
The variance is to, basically, does not require Forest Troll to be connected.
You recall, we all had that.
There is a historic tree right at the intersection of Forest Troll where that would connect, and the council...
So, that's going to stay closed, then?
Correct.
Okay. And English Oaks is opened up, though, correct?
English Oaks, basically, what's been designed is at the border of the property there, we have put a temporary cul-de-sac there, mainly for emergency purposes. As this continues to develop toward English Oaks, the connection will be made, and the street connection will exist then.
Any type of timeframe on one that, I just, I know some residents over there that were asking about that.
Frank, speak to the developer, project engineer, could give a little more update on those future phases when they're coming in.
Okay.
I think you, they got to get through this phase first, and that could take a while.
Yeah.
What other questions you have?
Is there any change in number of one-acre lots, anything of that nature, any additional smaller lots, anything, anything like that?
The only, the change pretty much in the first part is that we've increased the number of acre lots there, and I think the overall plan, which initial basically was seventy-one lots, and we're dropping down to propose sixty-nine lots then, so the intent is to have less lots than we started with, with the last plan, there at sixty-nine.
What are they going to do with those, that extra land?
Basically, they are using some for basically reconfiguration of the pond, is kind of what reduces two lots, two pieces, or two lots then for stormwater improvements.
All right. That was the only, you know, some folks were concerned when they heard, you know, adjustments to it, and they were a little concerned that some more smaller lots might go in, so...
Exactly the opposite, it's increase the number of acre lots, and also, too, it reduces the amount of fill being brought in, so it kind of helps bring that community down to similar grades as the surrounding neighborhoods then, so, you know, they could, you know, improvement that could be supported by the residents.
I'm good. Thanks, Tim.
Scott? Drew?
Tim, the other question I had, is the green, is that common area, or just green space and...
The green space is going to be common area, and also, a lot of that is going to be tree preservation, a lot of our specimen trees that they're preserving are located in those areas then, so that's what they green areas for.
I just couldn't make it big enough to read it, I had an idea of what it was, though. Thank you.
How many total lots are we talking about now?
Total on this phase here, initial will be twenty-four total lots, and then at the end result, basically what we're seeing in the overall plan, is a total of sixty-nine proposed.
And that's six, total of sixty-nine proposed?
Sixty-nine in the whole, eighty-two point two acres.
I was going to say, and at one point, we were well over a hundred.
Around a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty, where we started at.
So, it's significantly different in that regard.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions before we go to public?
One final question, go ahead.
I just got a comment, I know that the developer, and Frank is here, I just kind of wanted to say thank you to him for, you know, the whole process, we started off, and there was a lot of opposition, and he made it fit, you know, kind of what we wanted, and then, you know, even lessen the impact, but the more important thing is that he has cooperated with us for the DMS and the hurricane cleanup, and we've been able to use his property for that, so I just wanted to thank him for that, and let him know how much we appreciate having that area. Hopefully, we never have to utilize it again, but there, you know, there could be a chance, and so I appreciate him cooperating with us in that way, because that really helped us out.
Huge. I actually have him looking for another piece of property to buy, so he can let us borrow it for DMS.
Perfect. Thanks, Frank. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Berman?
Yeah, just one more, one more comment, I also appreciate the developer as well, I wasn't sitting up here during the Serenity Hills project, but I was out there, and I watched the whole ordeal unfold, and I just, this is an excellent project to come back, and it's evident, you know, not everyone's going to be happy, but it's not a full house anymore like it was. I do want to ask, you know, you have not because you asked not, and you guys delivered on the Forest Troll, is there any way possible for English Oaks to not be opened up?
Currently, that's a code requirement for English Oaks to be continued there, the variance that we had requested basically only had those two points of access, but it is a code requirement to ensure, you know, connectivity throughout the subdivision then. So, you know, basically, at this point right now, it's required by code, and we have to see what the future phase comes in as.
Not to mention, I kind of understand where you're going with that, but if you're looking at funneling more people on the Hensel, because you don't open that, you might make some people happier, but at the expense of others, so that's why, that's why the code calls for some hours.
Yeah, and I get it, I...
It's always good to have that second emergency vehicle access point as well.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thanks, Tim. I know we have at least one person like to speak to this, come on up.
Seems like we've been here before, get to be old here, but still, one of the same issues is...
Do me a favor, start with your name.
William Litch, Sweetwater Hills.
Thank you.
Been in this area about thirty-seven years now. I've been driving Hensel since it was a dirt road, and I liked it that way, but it's built up, and the projects we have done, rolling hills, very nice, I was, I actually enjoyed the cows when they were there, but, you know, the new neighbors aren't too bad, you know, the cows were sweet, but the new neighbors aren't too bad, and I'd like the new neighbors to be the same. Unfortunately, the problem with the, the way they have it set up in phases, they keep switching what they're originally going to do, first there were a hundred lots, it was originally Rojo Arabian, I don't know if anybody remembers way back then, when it was Rojo Arabian, it was going to be acre lots, and then they went to this other plan, they were going to put more lots and squeeze them in, then they were talking about, well, you're supposed to open up this road here, and this road here, and this road here, and this road here. Well, we can't open this road here because we have this historic tree. I don't buy that one, but, okay, I'll go with it, okay, you got a historic tree. What about Broken Bow? Eh, well, we don't really want to open that, that doesn't need to be open. Oh, okay, I'll go with that. Well, what about Westport over here? Well, they don't want it over here because of the school. I've heard every excuse under the sun, these roads are supposed to be open, it's supposed to be access, you're supposed to be able to go in, and you're supposed to go out. The way they have this set up right now with Phase One is, there's only one access point, that's Hensel Road, that's where the traffic is, that's where the construction trucks are, that's where the concrete truck is. Also, just for common sense purposes, I don't know if anybody else here, I think people know what water levels are. This project is one of the highest and driest in the, in the City of Port Orange. It has, the top level, I believe, is thirty-six foot above the water level. This is sandy soil, desert soil, basically. There's this animal called the gopher tortoise, anybody familiar with that? I've seen the gopher tortoise go back and forth over Hensel Road repeatedly, I don't know how many people have gotten out of their cars to move the gopher tortoise on Hensel Road so they wouldn't run them over. Now, based on the amount of acreage that's there, I don't know how many gopher tortoises were living there, I personally saw probably ten or fifteen of them crossing the road over a period of time. I didn't mark each one of them and get their ID or anything, but there were quite a few of them, okay? Now, based on the amount of property there, there should be somewhere between twenty and fifty gopher tortoises on that property. I don't know how many they removed from that property, relocated, where they're putting them, I don't know if they checked with Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission and got permits checked with Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission and got permits to move them or taken care of that. I'm not really sure. I don't know if any of that is even in the paperwork. But between the road access that they're limiting and the environmental issues, oh, the third case is the high and dry water issue is they've got a pond in the middle. Now, I've been around Florida since 1974. I've seen wet areas and dry areas, but I haven't seen any areas that were 36 foot above the water table holding water. Those were called, you know, runoff. But like I said, you can figure that out for yourself. I don't know how this pond's going to hold water unless they put a liner in it. So, but you do the math on it.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? There being none, back to us.
You got one?
I'm sorry.
Sarah Jones, 44 Woodfield Drive. This is a point of order. When there is a speaker here, you can hear them. They speak into the mic. When you gentlemen are up there, many times you do not speak into the mic, and many times you put your hand in front of your mouth. And it makes it very hard to hear a full discussion of what's going on. So please, if you would follow the same procedures that the people here do, it would help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this? There being none, back to us. Comments, questions? Drew, start with you. Scott?
Nope.
Chase? I'm good. Does that call the roll?
Councilman Navashen?
Yes.
Councilman Stiltna?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tremont?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes.
Foro? Thank you. Regular agenda, award of bid number 18-20 Enterprise Resource Planning Software to Workday and Implementation Services Collaborative Solutions. The recommended motion is to move to approve bid number 18-20 for two contracts as follows. One for Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Consulting Services with Workday, an amount to be determined, and two Implementation Services with Collaborative Solutions, the amount to be determined. May I have a motion to that effect?
Move to approve award of bid number 18-20.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. And I think we have Mr. Allen Rosen.
I, I think we do as well, but we good? Allen?
Yeah.
All right.
Allen Rosen, Assistant City Manager. So just before I show you the presentation, just some housekeeping information. We did send the contracts to council. There were some last minute changes, of which you received the changes. Just kind of want to let you know what those are, just so you know, because we haven't had a chance to discuss it. The first one was on the collaborative solutions statement of work. A line was added to the bottom of page six. And basically, what that is, is it's something that we as the client have to do when we're implementing. It was already located somewhere else in the statement of work, but we wanted to make sure it was called out in the order of when it was done and what step in the process. So it was just added there. Number two was on the collaborative solutions master service agreement. Basically, it was increasing the city's protections for termination for cause with collaborative solutions and the availability of us getting our customer data back for any purpose as opposed to just the purpose that was located in section 25. Those were the changes. So, to go ahead with the presentation, and after I'm done, I'll introduce some people that have come from, from these companies, so that you can put a face with a name and say hello and ask them any questions you want. So just to go over, of course, Jane Davis, our project manager's here as well. She's given you some updates over the last couple of quarters, as have I. The first one, just to go back, we started the process of going out to RFP at the beginning of this year, this calendar year. And here we are at the end of the year, last meeting in the year for award to council. We had a selection committee made up of people from across the organization, because this is not just a finance, not just an HR project. It is a project that will involve almost everybody in the city. So as you see here, we had people from almost all the different departments giving their input on what they felt the city's needs were moving forward. We received eight responses from really large companies, some of which you had recognized, some of which you had not recognized from the beginning, but they should be familiar now. So a lot of these companies, some of them implement their own software. Tyler does. Some of the other companies do not. They have partners that they work with to implement their software solutions. And so, you know, while we had Oracle submit, it was a couple of different companies that submitted. Oracle, Collaborative Solutions for Workday, OnActuate for Microsoft, and Tyler was going to implement. Tyler, those are the people that submitted their responses, which for a city our size was pretty spectacular. We worked with GFOA to help us put all that together, and I think they were pretty pleased too on the response that we got for our, our size city. So in the end, the committee selected Collaborative Solutions as the number one response to implement Workday's solution. Sierra Cita being number two with Oracle, and Tyler implementing Tyler as number three. A little, you've seen some of this before, but just briefly to go over it. Collaborative Solutions is a Workday Service Partner. They have implemented over 450 Workday customers at a 98% customer satisfaction rating, and you see some other accolades here as well for them. For Workday, they have a lot of local government clients. I've only put some of them on here, otherwise it would be a little too crowded for you to see what's there. There's a lot more on their, on their website, and of course, they do a lot with Fortune 500 companies. Of course, our bank, SunTrust, also uses them. I'm not sure whether it's finance or HR, both, but they use them as one of their software providers. Of course, you see here, we have City of Orlando, Sarasota County within the state of Florida as well that use this software. So just an idea of what we're getting and what we're replacing. So for the human capital management side of thing, the HR part of this software, there's a couple of new items that we don't have currently, or we have minimal capacity to do in the system that we have now. Some of that new functionality is enhanced reporting and analytics above and beyond what we have now, and more, more easily accessible to the layperson as opposed to having to using a lot of backend programming to get the answer you want. Learning is going to be a new functionality. That's basically a piece of the software that we can take stuff that we produce for our staff to learn, or stuff that we buy from other companies that we need people to train on, and it'll help track the training and the process that people train. And we know what people have done, what they haven't done, how long it's taken, who's passed, who hasn't, that sort of thing. And expenses, which will allow us to streamline and get rid of a lot of paper for our reimbursement process for the folks that maybe spend some money, travel and training or other expenditures. And it also replaces a lot of things. So it replaces Naveline, of which you're familiar with, HDE, the green screen, PlanSource, which helps us do our benefits enrollment, WorkBright and NeoGov, which is onboarding and selection of new staff, Execute Time and Time Clocks, which are timekeeping and time clock systems, and of course, all the manual spreadsheets that go along with that, and all the manual processes as well. So a lot of these that you see here are a lot of integrations. This all then gets funneled into the software system, Workday, and there won't have to be those integrations anymore. So it makes things a lot more streamlined. As far as the finance portion of the system, again, some of the same new functionality, reporting and analytics. It includes a projects module, so it'll help us better track our projects as we go forward. And it also includes Grants Management Module as well. And it was interesting, I was reading an article a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, that Workday's Grants Management Module was, I think, one of the best out there, one of the top two or three, I believe. And it replaces Naveline, Civic Clerk. We use Civic Clerk. Civic Clerk is, is a great piece of software that we use for our agenda. But they've been really open and willing to help us out on other things, and we use them for much more than that. And we use it right now to help us track our contract management. Of course, that will then be in the new financial system. We won't be using this ad hoc system, the ad hoc system for that process anymore. It'll be where it needs to be, connected with all the other financial and purchasing information. Of course, the spreadsheets and other manual processes as well as something that it will replace. To give you an idea of when we sign the contract tonight, what's going to happen? We will begin almost immediately, working with them to plan, plan out the process, working with Collaborative Solutions. And I believe within a day or two, our tenants in the Workday system will automatically be sprung up. And we will have, we would have access to them if we wanted to, but it's really there for us to start building what we want it to do. So we will start the planning right away. We'll end that in February. We'll move on to building the architecture and configuring the system as we want it. And that will be kind of the middle of the year, April through July. And then we start beginning testing. And the testing phase, we don't sign off on the testing until we make sure that it works. So generally, what you do is you still have your old system, you have your new system, you kind of put information in both systems, make sure you're getting the same answer. So you're making sure that, that things are working the way you want them to. And then by the end of next calendar year, we flip the switch. At the end of next calendar year, beginning of 2020, we flip the switch and we go live on everything all at once. And then Collaborative Solution hangs around for a little bit longer to make sure that if there's any grease that needs to be added to that wheel, that they help us out through that process. And then we carry on on our own. Not that they wouldn't be around to help us out if we had a question. Same thing with Workday as well. And then we have a brand new system starting the beginning of 2020. And that's all I have for that. But I do want to bring up, we have, from Collaborative Solutions, we have Brock Zotner, if you want to come up. And from Workday, we have Brian Kelly. And they have come to answer any questions and also just introduce themselves and a little bit about their company.
Greetings. Thanks for having us here. Brock Zotner with Collaborative Solutions. Our company's been around for 15 years, started in 2003. We've been exclusive and working with Workday since 2007. It's all we do. It's all we implement. It's all we know. So we, we do a really good job at it. We've got 100% customer, excuse me, 100% customer success in the project. So we've never had a failed project. And of all our customers, we have a 98% customer satisfaction rating. And we're not looking for you guys to be in that 2% when we get done here, so.
Neither are we.
Hello, my name is Brian Kelly. I'm with Workday. First and foremost, thank you for taking the time to evaluate Collaborative and Workday through this process. Your staff, Allen and Jane and so many others have done a fabulous job in the whole process. As city commissioners, you should be really proud of the people and the diligence that they went through all over the country, working with different cities and counties and states. And I will say that your team put in the amount of effort to figure out what was the best system for them, and they decided on Collaborative and Workday. And we're really happy to be here with you and be a partner with you through that process. Workday provides HR, payroll, and financial and grants management systems, as Allen pointed out, to a variety of organizations. You'll find systems and organizations that you recognize, like LinkedIn and Facebook, Bank of America and SunTrust, large organizations in the higher ed, that's why we do so well in grants management, like the LSU University, Penn State, Harvard, you know, there's lots and lots of them. There's, you know, over 3,500 different customers worldwide. Cities and counties all over the country, as large as City County of Denver at 13,000, to organizations of your size as well. So up and down, and five different states run our systems for HR and payroll. So we're really dedicated to the government marketplace, as well as providing to the government marketplace what the commercial folks are using as best practice and moving that back over. So we'll never leave you from behind. So as you pointed out, your green screen with your HD system, it's, it's a little dated. That's what happens. With Workday, you'll never, ever, ever fall behind because we always are keeping you up to date with the latest and greatest system. And we give you two updates a year, and that's one of the major reasons, I think, your, your team selected Workday. So we're glad to be here. Thank you. Any questions you have for us, we're glad to answer.
Start this way.
I'm good.
All right. Scott?
He make fun of our green screens?
Hey, I, I actually started in Cobal years ago.
Hey, you know, trends come, trends come around. We've just been kind of waiting and waiting.
We're going to start wearing bell bottoms next week.
Appreciate, appreciate you both being here tonight and your compliments for staff. I too would share in those compliments because I know plenty of times over the last several months, when I've had to come here to City Hall for business, they've been in here working.
Yes.
And, and poring over this diligently and putting every effort forward to get this right and get it right the first time. And it's a, it's a long overdue, long, long overdue undertaking. And so the importance of it can't be overstated. And so we are very much looking forward to this and getting this page turned. It's been, we've needed it for a really, really long time. So we're excited about it. Allen, the only thing I would say is, you got this?
Jane's got it.
Okay.
Somebody's got it. Keep it around, yeah.
We've got a, we've got a, a, a great city council. We, we work hard together. But this isn't our, this isn't our field for any of us sitting up here. So we're relying heavily.
That's why we weren't on the committee.
We rely very heavily on, on the staff and, and the committee and the work that they've put into this. And so we appreciate that as well.
I, I think you're being pretty kind when you said the green screens were low outdated. They're a lot outdated, but maybe just for tradition, we can keep one around, like maybe in Jake's office or something. If anybody misses it, they can go back and see what they're, see what they're missing.
Part of the contract is they remove every green screen. I don't know what they do with it, but they want it all.
Should we send them to some museum or something?
Smithsonian wants to.
Yeah, the Smithsonian would like them or something.
Jane, stay put. Okay, good. Senator?
Yes.
I have a question concerning when we're talking about software updates and, and of course licensing, how's that, how does that work?
You'll need an answer, Jane, or?
Please.
So basically, you're, you're, you provided a contract over a period of time. Your staff decided on a five-year service. So what happens over the five-year service is Workday provides, it, it is software and it's provided in a software as a service. We call it SaaS is the acronym for that. That software as a service provides you two updates a year for all five of those years. And then there's renewal terms set in your contract going forward. So we never leave you behind. So as we, I'll give you an example. When, when you started with the green screens, we didn't have the mobile devices, right? Your city will be now, be able to access some of the software on mobile devices. We don't necessarily know what the apples of the world will come up with in five years. Who knows? Maybe even 10 years, the city's still running the software. I hope that they are. We keep you updated all the time. So as new technology, technology like this comes available in five, 10, 15 years, we make sure that we're adapting with you and you're never left behind. And that's provided as part of that service. So it's just, it's no additional fee. It's just part of the service that you're already paying for.
Okay. That's a good piece, you know, because 20 years from now, we're not in the same boat because we're already caught up, correct?
And as far as we've, a five-year contract on the licensing, after five years, what do we do?
We have, we have renewals.
Yeah, there's, there's set out renewal terms in that contract. So you can, at that point, renew as part of that. And you can renew for another five years. You can renew for another three years. It's up to the city's discretion at that point to go through that process. And that's what most of our customers do at this point, is they actually get to that, at end of their period of time, at the end of the, you know, going into the fourth year or going into the sixth year, and then they renew for another three or five years. And they just keep rolling through each time. A lot of times, organizations will decide to add additional features and functions. You saw some of the ones listed on the chart like learning as an example, or expenses, or recruiting. As we add more feature and functionality in different modules, that's one of the things the city may decide to add on in the future. So there's lots of options in that. Okay?
When we do software updates, and I know that it's wreaked havoc on me with my day job from time to time, when we have been less than prepared for the updates, how do we know what's coming and what departments will be affected and what our, our training timetable will be? And I know some, some software updates are seamless. You don't even notice them, and some of them, not so much.
You should have had Mr. Burnett on the, on the evaluation committee. He's asked us some really good questions.
That was why Jane.
So, so great question. So what we do is we provide a preview tenant, if you will, and it actually has your production data sitting in that, so that you can see what's coming in the next update. So we'll move from Workday 32 to Workday 33. Those, the new update, if you will, that comes in either the spring or in the fall, you, you get up to five weeks of seeing what's going to happen. And then there's all kinds of things on what we call community, which are, are focused into different departmental areas. So we'll be able to say to the HR department, these are the updates that will actually impact HR. This is the update that will impact procurement, or finance, or grants, or so on, so that you can prepare as a city. All things are delivered, turned off, and then the city makes a decision on turning those pieces of software on going forward. And then there's plenty of time for you to adjust and understand what to move on to the next piece. And the whole thing is to keep you updated all the time, so that you are not in a situation where you are today, which is basically implementing a whole new system. We want to allow you to have smaller bites versus a massive bite at some point, five years from now.
And we have help desk support?
Yes, sir. It's part of the service. So there's even things such as disaster recovery and all of that. All of your data is here in the United States. So we have two major data centers, your full DR capability, you know, those kind of things. We've talked about, you mentioned the hurricane issues. We, I'm a Floridian as well, live in Tallahassee. We had one recently go right by us. So you, things we're always worried about as Floridians. So you have all that part of the service as well.
Help desk support is available 24/7?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Follow us the sun.
One more question. Sorry, Mary. The, when you, when you're up for contract renewal, what are, what are we renewing?
You're basically renewing the same features and software that you are running today, and then make a decision if you want to add any additional features that you may not be running. We'll just take learning as an example. The city's purchasing learning, but let's say the city hadn't. You could add that additionally there. Or you just renew exactly what you have and you just keep moving along with what's your, the modules you're running today.
Let me clarify. It's a, it's a cloud-based service. That's what SaaS is. And so if, if we don't do it, they turn the switch off.
That's right.
And we no longer have it.
We don't own the software.
So, yeah.
We buy a license to use the software.
Pretty much like Microsoft does.
Yes, sir. You're basically renting it. But that's, that's an easy way of looking at it. It's, it's a rental situation.
Which holds you accountable for making sure it stays cutting edge.
That's right. And the one thing is, is everybody's on, on the same version of Workday worldwide. So large multinational organizations, Home Depot, Walmart, Bank of America, SunTrust, they all run Workday. So they hold us accountable the same way the city of Port Orange would hold us accountable, right? So we always have to stay current with them and make a So, we always have to stay current with them and making sure that things are always applicable in today's world. So, as we grow with the city, we're also growing with those large multinationals as well, and you're getting the benefit of what they're, you know, working with us on as well.
What we also are seeing is that, and, and this is true of, of anyone, but, but Workday as well, is, is there's a, I'll call it a family. There's a family of, of Workday users out there who share best practices, share glitches.
That's right.
It's, it's like Google or anything else, you know, you complain, they fix it. So, so that's advantageous. We'll be able to reach out to Denver and Rochester and Buncombe County and, and say, hey, what are you doing here? Instead of now Robin calls around all her clerks and says, hey, what are you doing for this, what are you doing for that? Whereas this will be a little more collaborative online, so that, that helps as well.
Do you have an idea of what the reoccurring cost will be from year to year of five years?
We do. Alan can provide that for you.
Sorry, any other question?
The, the reoccurring cost, the yearly reoccurring cost?
Sure. That's actually a good question. We had, when we, when we first thought about this process and we looked at the market and we figured what the cost would be, we figured that the recurring cost for the software-as-a-service or for paying for maintenance would be about $350,000 a year. Our current cost with the five-year agreement, it was around $278,000. So, we're saving about $71,000 above what we thought it would be.
From our estimate.
Ongoing.
I, I would call that cost avoidance, because we haven't saved what we have.
It's just an estimate, and we came in lower than estimated.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council?
I'm gonna hold you for last.
Anyone from the public like to speak to this?
Scouts?
There being none. Jane, come on up.
Hi. So, I just want to add a couple of things. I think, I want you to feel confident in this project. I'm gonna give it everything I have. I think we've come a long way so far, even in the last year and a half, with all the change management and business process alignment that we did. And I've had a good opportunity to get to know all the staff, and I really enjoy working with them, and I hope they like working with me, and that's a big part of it. And Collaborative and Workday, I feel very comfortable about how we've all interacted so far. They work as one team together, they talk about it as the power of one, and then we'll become part of that team as well. So, I think it will be very seamless. And, and you talked about support and that kind of thing and GoLife. Well, we'll have our own GoLife support plan in the city too, where we will empower the staff to learn the software so they can help each other too. So, it's not always going to be a call to a Workday person or whatever. We're gonna have power users who raise to the top and be really good at using this system, because we don't want to be reliant on someone else all the time. And I think my, my big goal is going to be that we use the software more for, for its full capacity and not just like half, you know, we didn't really learn it and we kind of skipping our way through it. So, we want to get to the point where we're using it and taking advantage of everything it has. And they have a great thing that we're gonna be able to be part of, which is called Workday Community, where all the people on Workday are in one common area. You can go in and log on and do trainings and, and communicate with other people who have Workday. And because you're all on that same system, we can pick up things that they've done. So, if they've, you know, developed or leveraged the software in a, a certain way, that it's working really well for them, we can pull that item or certain reports and things and plug it and use it in the city. So, we have a benefit there about all being on that similar platform. So, I think it's, I'm, I'm very confident that it's gonna be good, and I think the staff are gonna give it everything they have, and it's, it's a very exciting opportunity for the city.
I can curb wholeheartedly. Any other questions or comments for Jane? Alan, you're here to talk us out of it now.
Nope. Before you vote, I do have the, the numbers that go into the record, so I wanted to make sure you had those.
Sure.
So, for colla, there's two different ones, Collaborative Solutions and Workday. For Collaborative Solutions, the total amount of the contract is $2,501,662. Don't choke, you've got the money. For Workday, for Workday, the total amount of the contract is $1,665,688. That's broken up three ways. There is a document for delivery assurance, that is $129,595. Training for the next three years is $141,481. And software-as-a-service for the next five years is $1,394,612. The other thing to keep in mind is, this is not a net cost to the city, because eventually, a lot of those systems that I read to you during the presentation are gonna go away. So, we do pay an annual maintenance for those things, the most of which is Navoline, obviously. And so, the ongoing costs are not a total increase in cost, but the net costs will be lower than that, because we're gonna be reducing costs on the other side.
That I'm counting on. Well, there are some things that you can't measure either, when we improve efficiencies, when we process permits faster, we, customer satisfaction improves because of those things. Those aren't necessarily measurables in dollars and cents, but they are measurables that count. So, we're, that I'm really looking forward to.
Mayor, I, I would like to just clarify for the record that, that this program does not do online permitting. We will have an adjunct program that will be coming, paid for by the building fund that will take care of that. So, so, and it will, it will communicate with, with Workday.
And unfortunately, they do not have a module for shopping carts or traffic lights. Just want to make that clear.
It will, but just not yet.
Yeah, something to think about.
All right, you're done. Questions, comments, there being none. We've already heard from the public, last chance. Nothing else here, call the roll.
Governor Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilman Phil Grant.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Trimmer.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. 4-0. Thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate you coming tonight. Jane, come up for just a second.
May I show the aisle already?
Yes. Again. You have been in trouble since the day you started on this project.
I realize that. You told me that the first day.
That's it. You've done a tremendous amount of work on it, and I just wanted to share something with everybody while you're here. At the holiday luncheon last week, I was listening to different employees talk on a number of different things to each other, and I heard, overheard a couple of employees talking that hadn't talked to each other in a while. Oh, I haven't seen you since we worked together on the pit crews. And then they started talking about that process, and that told me what an impact it made on them. And for this to work, they've got to buy in before they even know what it is, and they have. And I owe that to you, and I just want to say thank you before we move forward, and you're gonna be even more trouble as you move forward.
I know. No, I've, I'm glad I enjoyed the pit crews too, and I actually was mentioning recently, I've missed it, because I did enjoy that, and it was a great way for us all to connect. So, you know, we'll, we'll be reconvening all of that very soon in, in a, in a new way. So, I appreciate, that was very nice of you to tell me that positive feedback, thank you.
Absolutely. Go get 'em.
I'm glad the mayor brought it up. I thought you guys had been racing cars or something on the weekends. I was.
I've knitted a lot of blankets lately.
Have you? All right. Very good.
City attorney comments? None. City manager comments?
Yes, sir, I'd like to, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Council, I'd, I'd like to just share with you that due to the past couple of years of weekdays where the day prior is, is on a, before a holiday, there's not much going on on, on Monday, the 24th of December. We have, on average, one or two bills that, that get paid. So, I've made, made a decision to shut down City Hall on the 24th, which is similar to what other cities are doing. And I will, due to all the great work of, of the, of the staff, I'll be giving staff a, a paid day off. And for those folks that are working on duty, I will be giving them a vacation day to put in their bank for the following year. So, I just, I give you that as a, a data point, that that'll be happening on December 24th. We'll make sure that, the, all the announcements get put out, so everybody knows that City Hall and City will not be working on Monday, December 24th.
But the water will be flowing, trash will be.
Water will be flowing, you flush the toilet, it should work.
You call 911, there will be service, all the things that.
That is, that is, that is correct. The light, the lights on Dunlauton will not change, and, and to the, to the better or worse, and, and Taylor Road will still be closed.
We're not gonna see the chief out there directing traffic on Christmas Eve?
I did not say that. I think, I did not say that. That, I, I leave the, his departmental decisions up to him.
Jake, you got anything else?
I do not, sir.
Art House, Bob is not here. Port Orange, South Daytona Chamber of Commerce, they had their graduation earlier this month of, of the leadership, and we had a number of employees that were represented in their leadership class this year. And I, I just want to say, I couldn't be more proud of hearing some of them talk, especially David, when he gave his presentation. I, I can tell that it made a difference for them, and they will make a difference for, for us in turn. Roundtable of elected officials did not meet this month. We will be meeting in early January, and I'll let you know what's going on with the latest and greatest once we do. There are a number of new elected officials. I'm sorry, we did meet this month.
Yeah, we did.
I'm like thinking it was November. Yeah. Have to reset. The Roundtable of Elected Officials, we are, in January are going to be talking more in detail about the potential of the half-cent sales tax. We had presented to us the county's plan for impact fees, which is now in place. So, we were all, we will all be examining what our needs are, if and when or whatever we move forward with presenting a half-cent sales tax program. But the discussions will begin, and I will update you all as we go. And I apologize for that, I had a little moment there, didn't I? With that.
Mayor, I have, I have one caveat, I apologize, I do this to you all the time. December 24th, the city manager usually has a pancake breakfast for staff. I will be postponing that and probably running it sometime before, before the New Year.
Okay.
All right?
Let us know.
I will.
Let us know, we'll help you. This is the last meeting of the year. I appreciate all of you, gentlemen, we've had a terrific year. I think we've accomplished an awful lot. It's, it's not perfect, it never is, but it is a process, but I think we are better off at the end of this year than when we started. And I appreciate all of you, I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a terrific New Year. And certainly, I want to mention that to everybody who's listening and watching. I want Port Orange to have the best holiday season they possibly can have. And I'm gonna give the scouts one last bite of the apple. You guys want to get up here and review us right now and tell us how we did? I don't see anybody moving. All right, I'm lifting this, we're done. Have a good night, everybody.